All right.
Do we need to go to recess?
Thank you. All right, council, we have a little bit of...
We should vote on that.
We're going to vote on this motion to reconvene. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so let's go on the 7H. Tax sale date. As you can see, there is an issue with property and we need to have a date set. Jeff, you need to give us a little bit of direction. What is normally the appropriate timeframe we're looking at from the time council looks at it? Is that a month?
No, no, no. You've got to do...
Each one individually.
What is it? It's no less than 40 days and not more than 90 days.
We're very motion in the RFD.
So we want to get the motion exactly the way it's presented to us. All right, so that will be an easy fix.
So these people have been notified?
Oh, yeah. Three years. It's not going to be...
It takes three years before a sale of a property can happen for taxes. For three years, there are notices that are sent on a regular basis to the homeowner.
Plus the penalties have been... We'll send them a letter tomorrow stating this is the date that's been set. Now, most of the time, it gets settled before it goes to tax sale. Generally, in my eight years, we've done one.
In general, the bank has interest...
Especially if there's any interest from the bank. They'll normally settle it up and foreclose it.
Yeah. It is in their interest, so...
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we set the tax date for sale for August 9, 2016, and the reserve bids for Plan... Oh, we don't need that.
No, that's already...
Yeah, no, we do need that whole thing.
Okay, all right.
You're also setting the reserve prices for the auction.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the tax date of August 9, 2016, and the tax sale date at that, and the reserve bids for Plan... Do we need to mention the plan numbers?
Please.
1269LK Block 1, Lot 2, at $244,230, and Plan 1793E Block 25, Lot 1, Portion, at $76,160.
Okay, thank you. So, question for Jeff. Jeff, if I understand correctly, those bids represent the assessment...
Those would use the assessment, yes.
...of those properties.
We are required under the EMG to set the reserve as close as reasonably possible to market value, and without paying for an appraisal, we'd use the assessment.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. So August 9 will be the date. All right. So the tip interest is an interesting little bit of information for you. Jill, as a request, council to keep the rate at the same rate as it is today at 1%, and there is good reason for that?
I'll move that we keep the tip rate at 1% for the 2016-2017 year.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so that's done. Communication Plan Town Hall Meeting. If you remember, at the last Council of the Hall, we were discussing the importance of setting a date. The date was set as of November 1, which brought me to a chuckle. And so we need to have that motion put forward.
Yes, I'll move for the town... What are we calling it?
The Town Hall Meeting.
Town Hall Meeting.
Oh, Town Hall Meeting to set for November 1 of this year.
Of 2016.
Where's it to be held?
It's... We're going to have it right after CCL here.
To be held at the Civic Center in Chambers.
Have we measured the mayor's husband to get the cake rate?
Waiting for a motion.
All in favor? Thank you.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sure they've had their question before now.
Yeah, it's all right. But I've noticed that the city of Latridge has... We don't have to do everything the city of Latridge does, but they hold a lot of their Town Hall meetings not in their city building, but in, like, CASA. They hold them in the library and so forth. Would it be advantageous to us to maybe look at having a Town Hall meeting in the library where they've got people who've got more access to, you know, to the library instead of this room here? A lot of people don't like climbing those stairs.
You know, you are making a good point. That is something that possibly administration could look at to see if we could find an alternate venue that's more...
Or the set purse or something like that, you know?
An alternate... Well, yeah, it has to be without a cost, you know?
Pay for location help.
Yeah.
Do we not already own the library?
Yeah, of course.
We can also use the senior center if possibly they could give it to us as a given ticket. Okay, so we'll leave that for administration. Thank you for the recommendation. It's a very wise one. F, 7H, recommendation from CCL, electric vehicle charging station meeting. So that is one where we recommend that Counselor Pivoy be sent to that information meeting. So we need a motion to approve that.
I move to approve Counselor Pivoy to attend the electric vehicle charging station meeting in Mitchell Creek on... What's that? The 21st, 2016.
Questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. The next one is still in a package. We could have removed it, but we left it there just to let you know that the permission to use town land for food vendor is covered by Bylaw 1610 with all description of all the details regarding that use. So Jeff, do you have that bylaw?
Yeah, my apologies on that one, Counselor. I put it in the package thinking we need to get a motion to consent for people to use it, but Tara and Shem looked this morning, and our Bylaw 1610 deals with mobile street vendors quite comprehensively. So there isn't a need for a motion of council to do it in a mobile street.
In other words, it covers the cost per day, it covers the potential location, it covers...
Permits.
Permits, et cetera. Business license.
Can you summarize that just for your...
Yeah, where are some...
Sure. And you can maybe upload it for those who might be interested.
Yeah, so it just talks about how vehicles that are being operated are inspected by a regional health inspector. It talks about using separate sources of energy, like propane or anything that the fire chief is... Or it's been inspected to make sure regulations have been met, those kind of things. It has to have license before, like a business license, before they are issued anything. They have to... The licensee has to have a location other than... Their official location for the food truck can't be the food truck, so they have to have a mailing address or some of their permanent location to attach to them. You can't sell anything on top without a permit from the town. All permits issued are terminable if there's a breach by the applicant. And again, it goes on for a couple pages here, but...
Yeah.
They can be terminated. They must maintain a clearance of six feet of sidewalk for pedestrian movement, so they can't pull up on a sidewalk and block a sidewalk, for example. They cannot obtain a permit for an area larger than the front footage of the parcel of land adjacent to the sidewalk, so it doesn't give them a permit to use the whole block, for example.
It's for competition to everybody involved.
It's for competition.
Yeah, the only thing it says is that they can't... Let me find it here.
And what I mean by that is I don't want to see one food truck or one concession set up directly in front of another one. I'd like to see, make sure that, you know, you have visibility.
So it does talk about things like you can't set your food truck up right in front of a business that has the same product. So that's in there. So if you've got a restaurant, you pull your food truck up right outside the restaurant, that's probably going to be a problem. Sale of vendor's goods will not be in direct conflict. It talks about events in progress and how that's dealt with. Can't erect or maintain any signage upon a street or sidewalk in the town. So that's the big points. Like I said, it's a couple of those pages.
So is there other provisions against than being on that highway? I mean, Main Street is a provincial highway, right? Just wondering if that would be a prohibited place.
Off the street.
It has to be off of a highway, off of...
I don't know.
Like off of Main?
I don't think this deals with that specifically, no. I haven't seen anything here that deals with specifically on the highway or Main Street, no. But on Main Street, they'd have to find a place that they weren't taking up multiple parking spots.
That is the issue.
That would be tricky on Main Street.
That was my concern. Like along the avenue around from the empty lot on Main Street, there's no designated parking spots there. To me, that seems like a good location for them. Now, Barfus, young man, has got his... He has approval to have it on a lot there.
Yeah, so none of this applies to that one because they've probably rented from us.
Exactly, but there are other locations. I was wondering, like, there's a couple private lots across the street from the swimming pool there where the museum miniatures used to be. I mean, persons could probably apply to them maybe to rent that space, but also is behind the swimming pool where the skate park used to be, that could be a spot that...
We just have to give them that authorization.
So all they need is permission to park on town property.
And they have their...
We already have a bylaw in place.
Yeah, my concern, as you were saying, on in front of the pool, there are designated angle parking spots there, so they wouldn't be able to take them.
They wouldn't get permission to take up multiple parking spots.
That wouldn't be a place that could use.
You have to protect the parking that we have. We don't have tons, so...
So there are places that they could... There's options there.
We have an applicant right now that wants to use the old tourist information site as an example, so that's one was inquired about recently. So anyway, I put it on there, and then Shem and Tara did some good homework to say...
The tourist information...
Hey, it's all dealt with.
There's room there for several.
Yeah. All right, so that's good. Thank you very much. So we shall go... We dealt with 7H, so we're going to deal with 7I. Now, this one, we have to look at it as I, J, and K all together because it speaks of the Canada 150 grant, and I have requested that Jeff speaks to it because of the complexity of the grant and use and suggestion he received.
So I think I can simplify it to a large degree, and if I can, if we start with K, which is the pool. Now, let me back up a little bit. The Canada 150 grant is the federal stimulus funding that they've been talking about for some time, and they're rolling it out under this Canada 150 grant. Its intent is for recreation and green projects. Those are a couple of the top criteria they're looking to push. However, it's a matching grant, and you have to submit a couple of things. One is you have to submit a motion of your council that they support the application, and two, you have to submit confirmation of the other 50%. So you can't apply on speculation of maybe if you get it, then you'll look for a grant. They want shovel-ready projects that can be done next year for the 150 celebration, and that's what they're looking for. So we... Hawken, I should say. I'd like to say we, frankly, it was Hawken. Looked at a number of things that might fit, and we came up with the pool building renovation, the solar power system that we had discussed earlier as a council, and the LED streetlight retrofit, which is new on the radar for council. We've been doing a little bit every year of retrofitting our streetlights to LEDs, and this potentially, we felt, could be a fit to just get the whole town done in one fell swoop because we're already seeing considerable savings in our streetlight costs just from the bid we've done. So here's the two ways I can simplify. One is we... Hawken had some conversation with the grant people last week, and we met yesterday morning, and they actually are discouraging us from submitting the LED streetlight application. They feel it's the weaker of our applications, and they actually don't want to see us send in three. So they prefer we only submit it two, and they feel that's our weakest, and told us that they would actually prefer if it didn't go in at all. So if it's all the same, I think we should talk about LED streetlights in a minute, but I'm not looking for a motion. Unless council deems that a higher priority of the other two, I'm not looking for a motion because I don't think our chances of success are that good, according to the folks that are managing it. The other one that I can make relatively simple is item K, which is the pool building. We already have funds budgeted this year that we can easily make that motion to support the grant, and here's the funds. So that's a pretty straightforward motion to get it out of the way because we have a half a million dollars budgeted right now, which is easily, you know, covers our share. So that's one we could deal with right away. And the power systems is a little more complex because there's a number of alternatives, and it gets into the borrowing piece. So Mayor, I don't know if you want to start. We could make the motion on the pool in your background, or there is a motion in the RFD. Again, this is all if council supports application for these grants, but you have already supported this project, the pool project in budget, so I would hope that this would just help the funding piece of that.
Okay, so maybe, Counsel, we should have a separate motion in support to this particular item, which is K, the pool building renovation. Do you have the wording inside there?
Yeah, so in the request for decision form at the bottom, and you can... Well, we can just use this whole thing that council has put... Or that... Sorry, that Hawken has put here. It's a council supports the project, council's committed $303,000 towards the project, what the funds consist of, and if deemed necessary, council's previously committed to borrow.
Yes.
So it's a bit of a long motion, but Hawken's laid it out there.
Yeah, okay, so I need somebody to put it...
Just a question. So it was determined that applying for, you know, sending in three applications looks bad, and it might hurt the other two if you send in the third. And so I'm just wondering, like, is sending in two pretty standard or...
He said that being that they were for different types, one's a green project, one's a recreation project, neither of the dollars were huge, so they felt that it was probably they would entertain the two. The other thing is our evidence on the first two is much stronger than our... The evidence we're sending in with the LED. We have the whole solar study. It shows our rates of return. It shows that we've done this due diligence. We have construction drawings for the pool. We have estimates. What we have for the LED one is a quote from Leonard, and they just didn't feel we had a lot of evidence. We don't have numbers that we have in hand to show them the savings we have. Well, we're told by the supplier it's 50%, but I don't have the study on how many lights and what the dollars mean, so we have a weak application for that.
Is the anticipation of sending in these two that we'll get both or just one?
Yeah, no, that would be the hope, that we get both.
That's...
Or neither, but hopefully both.
So, Counselor Van Brin, you want to ask a question?
I want to talk about one of these applications, and that's the solar power system.
Can we... We have... We're trying to get...
Let's do the pool.
Yeah, we'll get it. I want to spend some time on that too, Counsel.
We need to deal with that, and we'll come back to the other one because it's an important one.
Okay, I'm very interested to make the motion, then we can continue to discuss it if we need to, but... So I think that the council supports the pool building renovation project. The council has committed $303,000 towards the project, and that those committed funds consist of $232,480 in currently available reserves that are specifically committed to the project, $50,000 from our 2016 budget, and $20,520 from our 2017 budget, and if deemed necessary, council has committed to borrow up to $500,000 for said project.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, does it work?
Yeah.
In other words, no matter what, that we have the grant or not, we committed to do the renovations of that building because it's no longer up to code, and it will be put up to code like it ought to.
I was just thinking, as far as the wording of that, and I'm sure we'll get it cleaned up or whatever, but just to add the words at the beginning, "to support the town's application to the Canada 150." It wasn't...
Oh, yeah, right. We didn't put the name of the grant to the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Friendly amendment to the...
Yeah, it's a very good point. It's always good to state what we intend to do right now.
Supporting the grant, yeah.
Okay, so all in favor? Thank you. So this is that motion. So let's go back to J or to L. What would you rather deal with first?
J is what...
No, but just hold on a second.
We have J.
Okay, all right. Jill, go ahead.
So when we looked at... Council had already given us some direction to bring back their funding formula to do solar on this building, and that was about $142,000 touch for the project to do solar on this. So when Hawken and I looked at the grant, we thought, you know, at the end of the day, if we can get 50 cent dollars, maybe we should look at also adding the ice rink. Now, we don't have to. We're just throwing this out here as a potential. If we can get a couple $250,000 to help with the project, then maybe we should look at ways to match that. So in the motion for the solar, you will see that it says council has committed $330,472 towards this project, which is essentially depleting all of our old capitalization. It's depleting reserves considerably. I'll be very frank, it is. And so we put it in the motion because you do have money to support the grant. We do have money on hand to support the grant application. But that's where I wanted to segue a bit into talking about borrowing. But what I'm wondering if is to pick this off a little bit, is council comfortable to make a motion to support the application for the solar for here in the ice rink, knowing, all of us knowing that if those projects are fully contingent on acceptance of the grant and bringing a funding model to council to be approved?
Okay.
You know, it would be those two things that would be contingent on moving forward with the project.
Yeah, so that needs to be contingent because council cannot be stuck with a project that could cost quite a chunk of money.
And the motion for the grant wouldn't stick here to do the project if we didn't get the grant.
Right.
Right, then...
So, but here's another question for you at that point then. If we were to be rejected and we still want to support this building, we have the funding to do this building?
So then the project goes... If we just did this building, we're going to go from $400,000 to $171,000? If we get the provincial rebate, it knocks it down, oh, almost, I think, $30,000 more on this one. It's about $140,000? Yes, you would have funding even in your...
In your reserve.
In reserves and your council-proved capital to fund a lot of it.
Okay, so this is the whole point. The point is, if we agree to put a motion forward to cover the two buildings, this would be contingent on the approval of the grant and a source of funding external from our reserve being provided.
Well, but we need to tell the grant people that we have the money in hand.
Which we do.
You do. You absolutely do, and it's to your discretion to use it. You have capitalization policy money that we don't use, we don't tax for anymore.
Right, exactly.
That could be used. I'm not necessarily recommending at the end of the day you do, but I have to show that we have secured money.
Right, okay.
So if I understand what you're saying, if we don't get the money, the grant, we could still go ahead with the civic center portion because we do have the money to do that without borrowing?
Well, you could do both without borrowing, but you would deplete... To do both projects without borrowing, I don't think I'd recommend, but you would probably much more reasonably do the civic center without borrowing, yeah.
Right, yeah.
But that's a decision we could make after we've...
You could make that on over...
Yeah, until we know we got the funding.
We're not committed to maybe the one or the other.
Yeah, so essentially, what we need to look at is there an appetite to go ahead and be able to realize that they have 50% of the capital costs that could come and no cost to us, and a limited cost because interests, if we had to borrow money, is at the lowest we've seen and going to stay there for a while, or the venture or load, or dead load is extremely low. If you compare it to any other town, you will see we probably at the bottom of the dollar ball. We do not borrow lightly in this town, and so there are venues that are possible, and at this time, probably the right time to move forward with something like that. But Jeff, what we need to understand is the savings at the end of the day for having those projects done because that is what makes a difference for us in our decision.
Agreed. So for example, on this solar, if we were to do both the civic center and the ice center, and even if you... Well, I shouldn't say if you factored in the economic benefit over the life of that project would be a gain of $739,000. And so there's actually a bit of debate there to grant or not, to go ahead and do it. Now, your economic gain's going to diminish if you borrow and have interest on your money, no question, right? So now your economic benefit might only be, you know, $690, $680,000, but you still have a decent economic benefit overall. It's the same thing with the LED, which I want to talk about after we finish with this one, is the LED one may not apply for a grant, but there's actually an economic... There's a financial argument to be made there to borrow and do the LED conversion. It's a long-term vision. It's 20 years out. Don't get me wrong. It's not Bernie Madoff or Turnon Investment, but it's...
It's probably a good thing.
Yeah, it's a very good thing. But it's, you know, you have 15 years of economic benefit after you repay for the retrofit. So with the cost of money right now, that's where Hawken and I want to have some discussion with councils as we start to approach the financing for these projects. Do we want to look at entertaining, particularly, in my opinion, on solar or LED retrofit where there is a calculated savings or return?
Right.
You know, it's tough for me to say on the pool how I give you a rate of return on that borrowing. I really can't because I'm losing 50% on that every year anyway.
Right, and I really honestly think that if there is no economic benefit to the town, there was entertaining. If there is economic benefit, I mean, on the long run, then taxes we're not going to have to collect from people. So essentially, that is you borrow or you raise tax. What do you do? You borrow the money, you allow for taxes to not rise regarding those issues. If you don't, sooner or later, the tax has to go up no matter what.
But Mayor, I want to qualify that just a bit.
Yes.
Because in both scenarios, you will still have for the first, maybe even up to 20 years, you have the adventure to pay.
That's right, so there is a cost to it all.
There's still that cost. The benefit is way down that road, but it looks like there's a good economic benefit. But to tell the citizens that they have this immediate savings resulting in a cost benefit next year isn't the case because you have 20 years of mortgage debt.
And you're exactly right. You have to project in the future. It's a long-term capital project. That's what it is.
So just doing back of the envelope calculation, so this doesn't actually seem like a very tough decision. $571,000 is the total cost of the project, correct?
That's right.
Of which, if we get the grant, half of it is paid for. So really, now our cost is under $300,000, and it's going to have $740,000 of economic benefit.
Well, you said there...
Well, yeah, two and a half time return, right?
And we still own the project at the end of it. It's still there.
Yeah, I've got two questions, Jeff. One, I think, is, you know, committing or stating for the grant purposes that we have this much in reserves doesn't restrict us to using... We can still borrow, if we want to.
I don't think they'd care at all where it actually came from. I don't think they'd care at all where it actually came from at the end of the day. They just want to know you're not scrambling to find sources. Because what happens is they award a thousand grants and 300 of them didn't have funding, still couldn't find funding. And then way after the fact have to give it back.
They want certain money in place.
And they want it spent. They want to know you're ready to roll.
That definitely shows our needs.
We're not restricted by any application to that reserves. The other question I have on the solar project, they'll also need to be insured, you know, and I'm just wondering if you factored in insurance costs.
You know, probably not, Council of angry. I never thought about that.
You know, to insure those.
I don't know what that incremental increase in insurance would look like, but it's something we'll have to check out.
Yeah, I just kind of went.
Yes.
And I didn't consider that.
It's possible it might be included anyway, under the blanket policy.
Just under our umbrella.
Well, it's an additional risk, you know.
It's a very good point.
Precedent risk.
I think Council of angry wanted to say something a little while ago. You're debating.
Yeah, still, the figures really look great. I mean fantastically. Council for Marvus just outlined. But I just don't want to make a knee jerk reaction to solar power. And if the figures are there, my question is, why isn't everybody scrambling to do this?
Can I tell you why?
Yeah.
Because three years ago, we could see where the government was going and we prepared for it. Other may not have.
Can I go a step further here? If you think back to the presentation that we went through on solar power specifically, if you were using this solar power to generate electricity to sell, it doesn't make sense. You wouldn't ever do it. But because it's savings on the retail cost of what we're actually paying, that's where the benefit is. So you are seeing a number of places that are racing and putting up solar power specifically to offset the retail costs. We're not the first ones doing this by any stretch.
More and more municipalities are looking to that. If you look in some of the latest municipal affairs, you will see that that is something that's not happening just a little bit, but more and more because of the support of the government at the federal and provincial level.
Yeah, I also think, just to answer that question even more, you know, one of the things we might consider down the road if the numbers look good, we might look at a 10 or 15 million dollar project. And so, like you said, we would hesitate to jump in, but maybe this is more like dipping in the toe. This is our experiment. This is our, we know these numbers will work. We know we consume this much electricity. We're not trying to retail it off at what we hope to get. So this is, this is a proper experimental approach to seeing if this really works. So that five years from now, once this is up and running and we have data from this, that'll help justify a 10 or 15 million dollar project that we might consider, you know, if the government wants to go in with us on a partnership here in this region.
Well, the motion is good in the fact that it's contingent on whether we receive the grant or not.
Correct. So this is what we protect ourselves.
But again, I, I work on the side of caution in the fact that I don't want to see us deplete our, our reserves.
Okay, that's a good point to be addressed. That's a very good point.
To the point where we don't have, because our provincial government right now is in a situation that they, they are just spending crazy and where is the revenues going to come from?
Yeah.
And, and we've got to make sure that we look at that situation in our local community, you know, and I get very cautious on that spending of our reserves.
Council of bound, just before that, I want to address that issue of reserves. Reserve is something that is a living organism for us, I would say. So right now, reserve are on the low part of the cycle for us.
With the pool project over the last couple of years, that was a huge percentage of our reserves because it'd been being saved for 30 years. So it was spent appropriately. I don't want to give any indication it wasn't. It was spent exactly for what it was. But yes, we have, we still have a little under 2 million, I think, but yes, we have our, we're lower in reserves than we have been historically because we did the pool project. And I, one other thing for reserves, right now, given the economic climate, you can make an argument that if we're making 4, 4.2% on our reserves invested and money is at 2%, maybe you shouldn't be pulling your reserves out of their investments and you should be paying 2%. You know, right now at the Alberta Finance Authority, a 20-year mortgage can be locked in at 2.8. A 10-year is 2 and a 5 is 1.13 or something. And you know, they're all under what we're making with that stuff invested. So there's even an argument to be made there. And I totally agree. I'm not anxious about depleting reserves at all.
Okay, so therefore the model that would be brought forward as to the different way we could fund this properly if we were successful at it.
I just like a comment. I kind of feel kind of similar to Council of angry airing on the side of caution. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote for this. This is what I fully understand and I do have an opinion, but I still remember 10 years ago when the bandwagon was wind power and the, and the cost savings that everybody was going to make on wind power. We know that that's not true now. That's, that's turned into a fiasco for many governments. They're not making money. They're losing money. And so I'm, I'm not totally certain, but I feel more comfortable with solar than I do because there is evidence that solar makes more sense, that there is better cost savings. And so that's, that's all I'm concerned about to make sure. I'd like to see some statistics because a lot of people are going to the solar energy. I'd like to see what their facts, what some of their figures are.
Right. And there is something maybe Council of bound first wants to address regarding that.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that when we're talking about the losses that have been incurred on, on wind power and things like that, and some of the subsidies that have come from governments, those haven't been for projects like this. In fact, Westman School Division did a project very similar to this, but they used wind for it. And it's been incredibly successful for them because they use the same basis as what this would be looking at. This isn't looking at selling our electricity that we're generating. That's, that's the key that makes this work. If we were looking at building a 10 or 15 million dollar facility right now with the idea of selling that electricity off.
There's no return.
There's no return.
You'd be losing money on it. There's no return to it.
Yeah.
But when you're doing it to offset the retail costs of which we already are paying, we already know those costs are in there and electricity prices aren't coming down.
Yeah.
That changes that formula quite a bit.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Mayor, we've got some infrastructure that, that is going to be, need to be rebuilt or replaced. And it's not, it's not 10 years down the road, but it's maybe even two years down the road. And one of those critical villains is our ice rink. Can we look at that infrastructure and making an, an approach to, to build an ice rink now? We've got a pool. It's going to be a beautiful facility, but I'm concerned about the ice rink replacement, you know? And where does that facility sit in? It's wore out.
Okay. Jeff, do you want to address this within a framework of infrastructure plan for this town? Maybe.
Okay, take a couple minutes.
I put you, I put you on.
No, no, it's fine. I agree. He's completely correct. If, if we were to say, well, we're going to borrow for a $300,000 solar plant, but we have a $20 million infrastructure deficit, that's a tough pill to swallow.
Absolutely.
There's no debate. If we wanted to go and change every cast iron sewer line right now in every old facility, then let's go borrow $50 million and get after it. But, so it, it's tough to put this in context of that. I'll be honest, it really is because we're talking about, you know, a conservation project on one facility. And yes, municipalities the world over battling with how do you finance large infrastructure funding. So I almost hate to try and compare to that. I get why they're in this conversation because we're talking about borrowing. And the only reason we've suggested borrowing on these two things that we'll talk about the LED in a minute is that they have a calculated return. That I can show you what that is. We can give you the numbers and.
So it's cost effective, in other words.
Yeah, and you know, Council of angry, I was thinking, he mentioned that why isn't everyone jumping on the bandwagon? And while many are, one of the reasons is if you look at these investments from an IRR or internal rate of return, they don't look good. Because we really are looking at what are we getting out of it from 20 to 30 years? Because the answer from 1 to 20 is nothing. So your rate of return is poor. So to look at it from a rate of return perspective, it's not very attractive. And the fact of the matter is councils are here for four years, maybe two terms. It's not very sexy for a council either. You'll never reap the benefit in your time on council, right? So there's those political pieces too. From a rate of return point of view, they're not that compelling, offsetting retailer otherwise. But if you look at the life of the project and take the long view, they have some really neat economic benefit. So it's, it's a different view, but Council of angry, I guess to answer your question is when we start talking budget here in three months, which is how crazy enough it's about, wait, three months? It's, yeah, you just passed it. I know, I know.
You know the right one.
Is, that's when we need to have some hard conversations about long-term financing, those big ticket items.
We have to. I mean, that's part of our planning also, right?
Yeah.
Okay, who wants to speak first? Uh, Council of bound?
Yeah, in light of Council of angry's comment, if we're going to replace the arena, it doesn't make sense to put solar on the existing arena.
Well, the problem is. The problem is.
Can it be transferred?
If someone moves to the next one, right?
All right.
Yeah, so it's the reason why you couldn't transfer that to just.
Okay.
Jeff, I can appreciate your comments on, on infrastructure repairs and stuff like that, but it's a given. I don't care what council it is. I don't care what community it is. You're going to be replacing cast iron pipes. You're going to be replacing tile, clay pipes, whatever. That is a given. I don't care where you go. But it is not a given that every community has to replace an ice rink or ice rink. Our ice rink is wore out and I'm just, I'm just worried about that replacement of that facility as, as an infrastructure because it's a valuable infrastructure to our community. And lighting, LED lighting, we haven't touched on that. That's important to our community. It's also important to federal because they're talking about luminescence, right? The disbursement of, of light. So I can see street lighting as, as an important thing because that comes under our strategic plan.
Safety.
And in, in the safety issue, you know, and making our streets and our communities safe in the evenings and at night and secure, I, I just have a, I just, I have a gut feeling I don't like to go with this solar power thing.
All right, so let's give each one another turn and let's make a little bit of a decision here.
My, my comment here is, did you have, didn't we just have an engineer report about our arena? Didn't we just have an inspection on the arena and said that that arena was in good shape for another 15 years or so?
We had the trust system inspected last year.
Right?
Yeah. And they were confident it was still structurally sound. There's a lot of components to that building that can go bad in a hurry.
I see.
The trust system seems to be in good repair.
Okay.
I'll be talking to you in two weeks about a repair on the condenser, but we'll talk about that in two weeks. Those are the things that go all the time. There's a sneak preview.
Jeff, Jeff, I see a beautiful barn being tore down at Spring Cooley and the trust system is fantastic. But they're still, they're still tearing it down, so.
All right. Okay, we'll get, we'll get a sense of what you're saying and I appreciate caution. Council of bound, about this, if you have another comment?
I, I agree with Council of angry regarding infrastructure costs and where we're spending money at. We're spending money on electricity right now too.
Yes.
And this eliminates that cost that we're spending on electricity.
On what building?
Sure.
Or.
Yeah, that, that's what all the numbers are based on. It's based on what's being spent on that building. Because it's, it has to be a.
You're going to sell that to our public?
Uh, yeah, I would actually. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest this if I didn't think it was.
It's going to be a hard sell, I think. That's just my personal view.
Well, Council, if you have read the news, January of 2017, electricity is going up again.
Oh.
And a very dramatic.
I remember, I remember when Westmans did their deal for the, the windmills and the flak that they took over them. And yet they've been able to fix their electricity costs for the next 25 years of where it was a couple of years ago. They're well ahead in doing that. And this is a very similar project to that.
I wish the town of Carson had the money that Westman did.
We were actually a partner in that.
At one time we were a partner.
And I don't know what happened to that.
Strange.
Yeah, we kind of got pushed out of the group.
Quietly, we were no longer a partner.
Jeff, Jeff, do you want to add something?
I don't want to try and sell the project either way. It's not my position. But one thing I would say that's a difference when we talk about utility funding, when we talk about recreation funding is I can't, no matter how much I would like to try, give you an economic benefit calculation in that infrastructure spending. I can't do it. I will never show, I, well, I shouldn't say never because I'd love to be able to bring you a model that shows you can make money over the life of the ice rink. But I'm almost positive that's never going to happen. So these investments show an economic benefit that do take some capital commitment upfront. Looking 12 to 20 years down the road and hoping you've got another 10 to 15 years life in that infrastructure, right?
All right.
No question, there's a degree of risk. I'm not trying to sell it, but you have to look at it a little bit differently.
All right, so I think we should entertain the motion at this point and make it contingent to.
On the.
To the approval of.
The grant?
The grant.
I'll go for that. Contingent on the approval of the grant.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, for, for the consumption that we will be reducing with this, these systems, the numbers look good enough even without federal money, if I, without the grant. Also, you know, right now, the government is willing to spend money on these kinds of initiatives. Maybe for the Canada 160 grant, we'll be looking at infrastructure and other things. I don't know what they're going to be willing to spend money on later, but hopefully they'll, they'll accommodate some of those needs in the future. But, you know, when, when they're willing to throw in 50% matching dollars, all of a sudden the return on investment is, for, for me, becomes a no-brainer. For that reason, I am going to move to support the town's application to the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program for the solar program, requesting, or excuse me, confirming that council supports this solar energy project. Council has committed $330,472 toward this project. I'll put in five bucks. I'm just kidding. That was, I'll put that, yeah, Joe, I'll put that. Why did we, 72? Anyway. Said committed funds consist of $330,472 in current available reserves that are currently in capitalization policy and council approved capital reserves.
So that's to cover.
Contingent on the, yeah, so this is only to support the town's application to the grant.
That's contingent on getting the.
So that's contingent.
Absolutely.
Well, again, the motion is to support the grant. We'll, we'll bring a funding model for the, if we get it, I'll bring you a funding model.
Right, thank you.
Before you go to tender.
So, any further questions? Saying none. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, then we need to do something similar for the pool.
Well, the pool's down.
Oh, yeah.
So Mayor, if I could just, one, one thing just to think about, we'll let this sit for a bit. The next piece was this borrowing and all Hocken and I were talking about is when we look at solar, we recognize it's scalable. This is probably a good start, like what Council P Boy said. Let's start somewhere and see where this goes. And even with the LED, there is actually a financial case to be made to do that retrofit right now.
Absolutely.
There's, there's an economic benefit case to be made to, to do that, but we don't have the resources to do that. We simply don't. And so Hocken and I were wondering if council wanted us to entertain what that would look like from borrowing? Or maybe council wants to put, if we're not applying for a grant for, let's say, solar or I mean LED retrofit right now, maybe we look at this as part of the 2017 budget. And we put a borrowing portion in that budget should council agree. But we just want a little direction as to whether we want to go down the road of some of these conservation initiatives that may require borrowing. If council even supported any investigation on it.
I, I really believe that when we look at the figures that you. I, I really believe that when we look at the figures that you provide, that is an amazing benefit to the town.
Mayor, I, I would make a recommendation that we ask administration, along with our finance director, to bring figures back to this council, where we can make a decision in our budget deliberations in three months' time.
Okay, now two thousand seventeen.
Regarding the LED project.
Okay.
That sounds like a motion.
It's worth a motion. So, questions regarding that motion? Counselor Barfus?
Was there a particular reason why you were looking three months down the road?
Well, it's, it's just during our, our budget negotiation, or, yeah.
So my question would be, and thank you for that, um, is there any negative effect that would come from putting that off for three months versus the benefit we might see if we jumped on it sooner?
Maybe. Uh, the maybe is that FCM has a green fund that, um, Lethbridge actually used to fund a huge portion of their LED retrofit. And so if that timetable comes about before budget, I would bring it back to council as part of that grant application process.
So my friendly amendment would be, unless something comes up like that, that would bring it to the table soon.
Unless a grant.
Yeah.
If you investigate it, find out.
Can be, can be, and...
Okay.
But, yeah, part of that motion also sounds like we're directing administration to begin the process and looking into this, so that by the time those discussions sound, we have everything we need.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Edmonds?
One other thing we might want to look at while we're upgrading to LED and trying to cut our costs is the replacement of all the lighting in all our town roof buildings.
Yeah.
These new fluorescent lights, which are no longer fluorescent. Get rid of the ballast, to get rid of the hum and all the noise. They're highly efficient, and they're putting them in at the Agro Dome now.
I just, I just put a few in, and look out.
So we just did as a test, we did the whole office area this year.
Yeah.
So as part of our civic center maintenance budget, we had somebody come in with all the replacement tubes. So the whole office area, my office, everywhere downstairs is, is LED. And so we're kind of lot, trying it out, well, and you can, you can actually buy the type of light you want. So if you want how many lumens that mimics sunlight, or more blue, or more yellow, and you can actually do all that, so... We, we trial it, absolutely.
So that's an interesting thing.
Yeah.
So that part of the direction could be...
Which building retrofit?
Just, just for interest sake, I came home the other day, and my wife come trudging in the door with big bags from the hardware stores, and what's that? Changing all our lights to LED. And it cost a small fortune at the time, but the economic benefit is gonna pay for itself, you know, in a very short period of time. And we put those lights in right away, and I noticed a big difference, and I like it.
You know something, when we moved to Carson, the first thing we did on our home, shut all the lights.
The LEDs.
Yes, and the town had, had a plan and incentive that we used to...
If you don't have to change a light bulb for fifteen years or twenty years, that's awesome.
All right, so we never moved on the table, we must not forget that.
And you're including Counselor Edmonds.
That's part of your, your...
Edmonds.
Amendment. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so...
Just real quick, just tying, tying in with that, I'm wondering if we couldn't somehow, maybe in our next letter in front of the mayor, or the deputy mayor, or whatever, just point out that the, the town is taking steps towards green, green initiatives, and, you know, we're considering...
Yeah, well, we need to put in a proper context of the government over there.
Not, not just green, but cost savings too.
Cost savings, yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we love the earth, but we love saving money too.
Well, essentially, that's what motivates us.
When you can do both, yes, we've got our vote.
Yes, okay. So, we have L, borrowing for an application project, we will not deal with that at this point, we already dealt with that. M, irrigation pump need a reconfig, reconfiguration. I would request that we deal with this after we deal with the in-camera issue of the black sand, because those two are linked together. And in order to make a proper decision on M, we need to know...
So we're gonna move that, you think, do you need a motion to do that?
If you, if you do, no, I don't think we do need a motion, I think it's just...
You should have been there before we accepted each other.
Okay, so, E on the financial report, you have the April two thousand sixteen, any question, comments? If not, we need...
I didn't have a question on that.
Oh, Jeff just departed.
Yeah. I was, I hadn't even printed me a copy, because I was, I was trying to understand, usually we have, on the, we have a, we have an operating, you know, like when we do the budgeting, we have an operating, oh, there's Jeff, thanks.
There's a question for you, Jeff, so you come to the podium.
Yeah, so Jeff, I was just trying to understand on, on our, uh, income and expense sheets there, like normally when we do budgets, we have an operating budget, then we have a capital budget. And as I, I was going through this, and it looked, looked like it was just basically combined, operating and capital. I was having a hard time figuring out how, how it was figured on the...
Yeah, I'm just getting there.
On, I say, on, on the, the income and expense, and I, revenues and expenses. Uh, just was wondering if, if this was different than normal, or, or if I've just missed it.
Sorry, Counsel, let me ask a couple of clarifying, so you're saying on our, the second report there?
Yeah, on, on that, yes.
We have revenues, and then we have expenses, no, they are not broken out as operational and capital.
Because you, are they, is it basically operation, well, I mean, you, you have it combined?
Yeah, it's a combined.
That's what, that's what it looked like to me, is, is that...
It's total revenue and total expenses, that's what you're...
It's normally...
Yeah.
That's the way we're done, for some reason, I just, it, it...
It's, you know what you're referring to, you're referring to the budget?
I know the regular budgets, it's broken out in the...
When we bring you a budget, these ones have it, yeah. When we bring you a budget to actual, it's separated?
Yeah.
What happens with this report is it grabs a bunch of different accounts and lumps them into the category, and it will include both operational capital.
Okay.
This is a small revenue versus expenses in general. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the financials.
I'm moving to accept the financial statement for January first, April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Okay, thank you very much. Under nine, committee and other reports does not, they're the week, so for next... I would devote, sorry, chief.
I was wondering what you were doing.
Okay, that's all right, sometime I do not move as fast as you do. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, and nine, if you could remember, in two weeks' time, you need to have your reports in to Jeff, and the...
I've got a lot of them already, I've got quite a number already.
I'm not giving you another report this one.
Well, whatever you do, Counselors, so long you keep us abreast of the changes, that's all what I care about.
I think I have all of Counsel Bangerie's, actually.
Well, he wanted to... We got one more coming, it's due next week.
All right, so correspondence, let's go quickly to correspondence, and then we'll get our in-camera. We have Mr. Smith there that needs to entertain us for a little while. But he does not even, he didn't even bring his hamburgers, oh my. Okay, correspondence. If you could see, uh, last time in a minute, well, in minutes, you could see that when we had Chevron come and expose the issue, the potential issues that could happen to those type of, uh, local businesses all across southern Alberta, uh, we decided to write a resolution, thank you Counselor Creed for your wise advice.
Thank you for doing it.
To tell me to do that. I was on a wire, I must say. It was the thirtieth, and then it was due the thirty-first. So that night was a long night. Anyways, the resolution was written, the background there was written, it was, uh, reviewed by, by the organization of the ARA, and, uh, very appreciative for what we did. So that was sent to AUMA and accepted for resolutions in October. And further to that, when I was a mayor's enree, uh, this past two weeks, I put forward this very issue, and obtained a motion from the floor to send a letter to Premier Noddy, and to all the subsequent, oh, ministries involved, the four ministries involved, to make the government aware of what's going on. And guess who has a privilege to write that too? So, uh, it's being reviewed right now, and I'm going to make sure we have that right. And I will bring that to you next council meeting, and we'll, if you approve of it, we'll send it out. Okay, I must say our local Chevron is very appreciative, not only for their business, but is for the whole of AUM, of all those businesses in southern Alberta that offer government services locally. Alberta Municipal Affairs is an award for Safety Codes accreditation. We're very grateful for them to recognize that we are safe, but mandated us to be safe, so it's a really backhanded compliment.
But at the same token...
But to say that is, is a recognition of the world...
To, to our administration, so forth, yeah.
To all employees.
Counselor Edmonds is sitting pretty quiet, so I will move that we extend for half an hour.
No. All in favor? Mayor, Counselor Edmonds, you fill it in.
I'm watching you, I guess I like to watch more.
As for emergency, as you could see, it's a, it's a briefing on the changes of Bill thirty-one, twenty-one. That's for information. So that conclude at this point, that portion of our meeting, we need to go in camera.
I'll make a motion to go in camera.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you.